It is seven o'clock, so I would like to call the meeting to order. And the first item on the agenda is the citizen comments. So if anyone has any comment on anything not on our agenda, I'd be glad to hear those comments at this time. In a rush to the podium, we will consider the minutes as distributed.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the minutes be approved submitted of April 17, 2019.
It's been moved in second that the minutes be approved. So all those in favor? Oh, I actually have this part could clarify us on that.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Vice Chairman McFadden?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Marchener?
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant?
Aye.
Commissioner Gordon?
Yes.
The minutes are approved as written. We'd like to have a read. The next item is a public hearing on FRSU-001349-2019, special use permit application submitted by Fiona Lipton for a dog training facility with a kennel at 650 West 11th Street, Suite A. Can you give us background on that, Mr. Camp?
Thank you, Chairman, members of the planning commission. As you said, this is a special use permit for a kennel. That's not necessarily a completely accurate description of the use, but it does include kennels, and so therefore special use permits are required. The property is owned C1 district, which requires a special use permit for kennels. The use, as presented by the applicant in her business plan, is more of a dog training facility, and there will be kennels there for what they refer to as doggy bootcamps, where owners will leave their dogs there for an extended period of time, receiving training. And it's not intended to be a regular commercial kennel, as presented. The property is located in what we know as Village 650 West 11th Street, close to the new police headquarters on Monroe Avenue, and just down from the Thai Restaurant and the corner store. It's close to some residential uses, but like I said, it is in commercials. And there's a little concern about noise, which I've spoken with the applicant, and she has to put together a noise mitigation plan. And so that's part of the application. There's also a site illustration of the existing conditions on the site, which include parking along the street. And then there's some private park, off-street parking in the rear of the building, which accommodates a mixture of uses, which are in the property. There's two apartments upstairs and two commercial businesses, two commercial spaces downstairs. One is currently vacant where the applicant would like to locate it, and the other is a laundry mat. The parking lot is gravel, it's close to Intra-Trood. There's a big, nice big area in the back with a lot of shade trees. The code would require a total of 12 parking spaces. They do not have that, but the site does qualify for the parking exemption indicated. However, that does call for looking at, making sure the parking that's there is adequately maintained. And so in one of my recommended conditions, I have some comments on that. Public Works had reviewed the application, and they informed us that they have actually had that road areas scheduled for paving where the front parking area is. So that is already on schedule to be done, and so that will help because there was a little bit of concern with the poor condition in the front. But that is town property, and that is totally taken care of. As you said, this requires a public hearing. Staff has given a recommendation of approval, with seven conditions for the additional use permit. This includes, one, just a disclaimer of what the use is, and I won't read that verbatim. Number two, the maximum number of dogs that will be housed within the business would be 10. Three is that the Tier 1 soundproofing measures identified by the application shall be installed by the applicant before the business is opened. So if you look at the sound mitigation plan that the applicant has submitted, there's three tiers. Tier 1 is what we would start with, and that would include soundproofing on the walls. And then there's a variety of other measures that she's put forward in Tier 2 and Tier 3 that would be used if directed by the planning commission in the future. So in other words, if we find out that Tier 1 improvements are not adequate enough to address the noise, then it could be brought back to the planning commission, and the planning commission can bring it up and require the additional improvements. Of course, the point there is to make sure that the noise is not becoming an issue for the residential uses in the neighborhood. Then there's Condition 5, the existing parking lot shall be resurfaced prior to the opening of the business. So that could mean just re-graveling the existing parking area. The currently, the spaces in the backyard designated with signage, and it is, like I said, currently gravel. And Condition number 6 and 7 are the standard conditions, which allow us to inspect the property as needed to ensure compliance, as well as laying out a disclaimer that the use can be revoked through a special public hearing if it becomes an issue. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Camp, I have one question. How exactly will we know if the Tier 1 soundproofing is or is not working? Are we just going to wait for police noise violation calls? Are people going to call into the planning office and complain? Is Mr. Brock going to follow up and stop by and ask neighbors? That was my biggest concern, is getting a kennel in here and noise complaints. I read through the entire Tier 1, Tier 2, Tier 3, and I think it's great, and that answered and mitigated for me a lot of issues. But again, I just wonder how will we get that reported, please?
So as noted by the building official documented in the report, there is a change of use required, and so that's going to require a building permit. Town staff would be part of that process to make sure that the work is completed.
I understand, once Tier 1 soundproofing is in place, how do we know then that Tier 1 soundproofing works?
Well, if we receive complaints about the noise.
Okay, that's exactly my question. So I'm just trying to understand, for the neighbors living around this residential area, how are they going to? I mean, is it like that? Here, if you have issues, please call in. Between being a good neighbor, starting, you know, getting a business going, this is great, but I also want to make sure that the folks around are empowered to say, hey, Tier 1's not working well, let's move to Tier 2. I thought Tier 2 was really good. Tier 1 on the low end, so I just don't know if that's enough. I just know, I have one dog, and my dog is just so loud sometimes. What we could do to go to this training school, I don't know, I would think, but at the same time, it's just one of those...
What we could do to help with that would be to send a letter out, if it's approved by council, to the adjoining property owners, and notify them that it's been approved, and that these are the conditions. And if it becomes a problem, please notify the town. Is that what you had in mind?
I did. I'm kind of asking rhetorically a little bit, but also, you know, just trying to make sure that that concern is fully realized within this discussion.
I'm not sure how else to do it, other than just sign on the property.
Could you put in, whatever, encourage them to talk first to the owner, and see if the owner, upon hearing from neighbors, might voluntarily move to Tier 2 and not have to resort to government?
I agree. I think that's the best alternative, is neighbors talking.
Yeah, but I think it should be suggested to them, too. I mean, put it in the letter. They might not think of it if they don't put it in the letter.
Yeah, we can certainly do that.
Thank you.
Well, since this is a public hearing, I'd like to openly hear it now, and see if anyone has comments to make, anyone out there?
Good evening, you all. My name is Eric Zane-Starks. I live adjacent to the property. My fence, did you see in this picture you had there? I live, I mean, a rock throw away. Me personally, I love dogs. I got two dogs myself. I just don't, the noise, the noise and, you know, having all those dogs there, that's disrupting the community, you know? I mean, I've been there 10 years, and to put a kennel there, I understand it's about a money issue and growth, but, I mean, in a residential neighborhood, I mean, me personally, I'm opposed to it. But I'm only one voice. But I'm just saying it because if you allow these animals in here to seek to intrude outside, I mean, somebody could break in there, let the dogs loose. I mean, there's so many different avenues you could take. Me personally, I think it's a bad idea. But, because, I mean, I can hear people next door, you know? I can hear the noise, it echoes, I can hear it. But, I mean, it's totally up to you all, if you all want to pass it, or whatever you all want to do. But me personally, for respect out of the individuals that live there, even though they didn't show up, I can't speak for all of them. I'm speaking for myself, because I live next door. And I think it would kind of be a disrespect to the community to put that there. I mean, I'm sure there's other places that they could put it there, but I mean, me personally, I don't think it's a good idea. I mean, to listen to, to listen to dogs barking, I mean, you could bring your dog, the dog could be in heat, I mean, you got so many different avenues you could go on, you know? But it's up to you all, you all pass it or not, but I think it's a bad idea. I really do.
So if you, how would you feel if within, so within the drawing that they've given us, they've shown us that the dog kenneling area, so the dogs would be kept there overnight, is inside of that front store area?
Mm-hmm.
Do we have that picture? This is, when I was reading this this morning, you know, making sure that I was up to date on it, it looked like, it looked like it could be a potential that, it could be a potential that they could mitigate sound the way they're planning. They've got a really detailed plan of how to not have dogs being heard. So that, you know, as I've already voiced, that was my concern. If they could mitigate that sound, and they did have some, maybe a security system to ensure nobody's going to break in to release the dog, and it doesn't appear that they're going to be training these dogs outside at all...
Oh, so they're not going to have access to it?
It says, back training area, front training area is all within the building itself.
Okay.
So I, you know, I also was thinking the same thing. Will they be out in the back parking lot training dogs? I'm sure they'll let the dogs out to use, you know, use the facility, whatever, so you go to the bathroom out there. They have a plan for mitigation on that, picking up the...
Waste.
The waste and everything like that. So how would you feel about that, if it was, if the sound was mitigated, and there was no barking dogs all night long? They've got ideas for kennels that have covers over them, and there's a bunch of things.
And all that is written out in the handout there by the door, in great detail. They're bringing in material from Poland that is super high-tech and super dense, you know, super industrial quality, sound deadening thicknesses, and walls around the kennels and all sides of it. It'll be great.
I worked with some of those materials also, I know what they're talking about. But it was just, you know, I'm thinking that, looking at it from hindsight, looking at it from, okay, I live, like, I can throw a rock at any building, I'm 650 to A. And, you know, I've been there for almost 10 years, you know? I mean, they say it's a low-class area, whatever, however it may be. Everybody does somewhere to live. I'm not a low-class person. I'm a very upstairs citizen, paying my bills, work every day, work too much. But, you know, I just want to have the same respect, whether I got $100,000 or $5,000. I want the same respect, and to me to, you know, nobody's here but me. I could care less. It's just me being concerned about not only my personal safety, the neighborhood's safety, and the respect of businesses. So if you all pass it, and they, you know, follow the requirements of what they're supposed to, I don't see it would be a problem, but I just can't, I can't, I don't, I can't put it together like, you know, with this sound deafening board and all this other stuff. I mean, dogs have it online, dogs are stubborn, dogs, you know, I mean...
Well, you know, I mean, that's why those particular, and I don't, I don't know, I've never talked to anybody involved in the business, but all the descriptions in the paper there, the dogs that are there are the ones whose owners care enough to spend the money to have them trained...
Right.
...into better behavior. So obviously, it seems to me that the goal of everybody involved in this process is better behaved dogs, and therefore quieter dogs. So that being the goal, I think that it's not like the pound, where the dogs are just parked...
Right.
...and fending for themselves on outdoors, and outdoor kennel, and, you know, woof-whooping because there's nobody else to take care of, and nobody to pay attention to. These dogs are going to be getting, you know, high intensity training, schooling while they're there.
Right.
And the owners certainly are there to have the dog, are sending the dogs to be educated, and they don't want to spend the extra money to have the board there. So they say that they don't expect more than about four dogs there.
At all times.
Right, right.
Commissioner Marchener, my concern was, they do plan on kenneling them there at night.
Right, right, but they, they obviously aren't going to be having the same dogs for a long period of time, because...
I said, um...
If you're getting trained.
Up to two weeks.
Two weeks, yeah. That's about what it takes to train a dog. Because you have to get it...
I didn't want it to rock, but...
Before you sit down, I want you to feel respected and listened to. That's really important to me. I'm over there a lot...
Right.
...because I'm good friends with the Bens, you know?
Right, you're into a lot of...
And you're right, you can almost reach out and touch it from where you, where you live. And I really spent some time finding out about how this would work, and how the animals would be managed. And it's a closure, enclosure, enclosure. It was like kennels inside rooms that are shut inside a building that's closed. And I'll tell you, we asked for plans for every little piece of poop to be put on. So however this goes, I don't want you to feel like everybody knew what they wanted to do, and here you are, like, all by yourself, because you're not. We're here because of you guys.
Right, because ladies and adults in Baltimore, I drove all the way home, I'm working in Baltimore, and I got the letter, and I said, let me go, I said, I'm gonna go leave. So, you know, I stopped my day to actually figure out, find out, you know, what's happening. I mean, you know, I'm not, I'm not home a lot, but when I do come home, I want to lay down, I want to sleep...
Sure, I got that.
If I want to go out in my backyard and throw a burger or something on the grill, we'll just go outside and chill.
Sure.
I want to have the same respect as, as everybody, you know?
I agree. And I think one of the things that's important about the recommendations that the staff within town has made, this is a condition, this is conditional on meeting certain requirements, and you, as the person who lives next door, have the right to let us know if it's not okay, you know? So it's not the end of the story.
Right, I just, you know, I understand that it's a new venture. I'm not accustomed to it, but sometimes you got to get accustomed to change.
Sure.
But if change is not productive in the whole, the whole ball of wax, then it doesn't work.
Got that.
It only works from one side, not the other side.
And, you know, I think we have the applicant here, so maybe, maybe it would help the discussion to hear a little bit from her, too.
Right.
And, you know, look at both sides of how it would be to be neighbors.
Right, I mean, I just want to be, I don't want to have to be like the person that calls, you know, because I'm not that type of person, you know? Because I try to, I'm a social person, but when I'm home, I'm myself, I don't, you know, I just, so I don't want to be the person that calls, but if I had to, I would, you know? But I just want to make sure that this is, this is a good thing for everybody, you know? Because it's means around everything, but it's the respect that a lot of people don't get, because some people don't respect other people, not because of race, gender, none of that. They respect, they don't respect people because of the simple fact that they have more than somebody else, and they look down on those people. And that's the issue that, you know, I want to bring up, because we all got to live here.
Right.
It's enough disrespect in the world as it is now.
Right, I agree.
So why bring it right to my, right to my door, you know what I'm saying?
But maybe it won't be disrespect.
Right, it might not. I mean, you know, I just didn't, you know, I got the letter, I didn't quite understand it, you know? I figured that they were saying a train facility, so I'm figuring that the whole, the whole back enclosure, the gravel, they were going to actually somehow try to train dogs back there? I was trying to put that together, and I was like...
Exact same thing.
No, this can't work.
Sorry, Rick.
You know, this can't work.
Yeah, so, want to hear some more?
Sure.
All right.
Did you sign in? Get your sign-in name and address?
Yeah.
I'm the applicant. I hope that...
If you could sign in, I would like to...
Sign in, sure, sure. I hope that Mr. Starks will take a moment to look at the packet, because we, as the committee has seen, went into remarkable detail about the plan, because obviously, if there's any dog-related type business in any community, the first thing people are going to be concerned about is the sound. We've also obviously addressed other issues, such as the water use and the waste, and those are relatively simple, but the sound, obviously, you can't just say, oh, it'll be fine, right? And so that's why we did so much research, and so much painstaking, you know, measurements, and, you know, I don't know about, you know, acoustics. So I think the plan really does address it in a very comprehensive way. To, just to clarify a couple of things, we have no intention at all to train any dogs outside. It's just like you said, the dogs will be trained in the actual space, enclosed space, and they'll just be let outside, always, always, always on a leash. I mean, all dogs should always be on a leash, but especially with the dogs that we have. And we would hope that people in the community always have their dogs on leashes as well. I'm not sure if it's the law in Front Royal, and, yeah, it should be, it's pretty much the law, you're right. So the dogs will always be on a leash by either a trainer or a highly trained kennel tech, who is responsible for making sure the dogs get out to do their business and have food and water. So, you know, we're not just going to, you know, have anyone, oh, can you take the dog out? No, these are going to be trained, people who know how to handle dogs, who know leash handling skills. And all the training will be done inside the facility. And I'm not sure how many of you have been to the physical space, but it was a restaurant, and there's sort of like an enclosed counter area where, where I guess it was kind of like that's where the counter was, and that's where the register was, and it's still there, and that's what we thought would be a really good place to have as the kennel area. And we do want to have, you know, the soundproofing curtains, and then, of course, the baffles, and all that would deaden the noise so much that, I'm sure some of you have probably been to places where they house a lot of dogs, and you come in and, oh, you just get bombarded sound, that's, it won't be like that in our space. And we do believe that everything that we have in the plan, if Tier 1 doesn't do it, we can move on to Tier 2. I mean, that's why we scaled it. And honestly, beyond that, I don't know which, if we, I don't know that we can do anything beyond that. I think we pretty much addressed every possible issue that may come up. So I, I mean, certainly, you know, I think we do very much want to be good, you know, citizens and good neighbors. We also want to start a business. So I kind of look at it as an issue of just finding that balance, right? And Front Royal and any town really should have an environment that enables people to have businesses and thrive, and be positive members of the community. At the same time, you know, you want to find that balance with the residents in the area where you're conducting a business. So I think we've done that, but again, we're not going to know until we actually start, and then just kind of go from there. But I honestly don't foresee too many problems, but we certainly want to be respectful of, you know, the resident area, so I think we've addressed it. If anyone has any questions, I'm really happy.
I'd like to, I had written down, who decides if Tier 2 becomes necessary. Also, do you expect that that would be your own assessment, or that might be in response to neighbors' complaints?
Well, honestly, I, part of our plan was that once we moved in, we would go and introduce ourselves, the neighbors, like, hi, we're your new neighbor, this is going to be our business, and we've, you know, taken a lot of steps to address the possible noise issues. If you still have concerns or interest, you know, if you're experiencing some type of noise, noise issues, please come talk to us. And if no one talks to us, and we don't hear any complaints from the police, right, we're just going to kind of assume that everything is fine. There's no way for us to know unless people actually talk to us. But if someone, whether it's one person or two people, if we start hearing, hey, you know, the noise is, you know, the barking, you know, we're hearing, okay, then we'll independently just move on to our next measures. We're not going to wait until someone tells us, because we don't want, we want to run a business, we don't want problems in the community, you know? So...
Any other questions?
I, I do have one question. So is there, are there videos or anything like that that could be a resource that we could disseminate to folks to show them how this soundproofing technology works, like a YouTube video, or something like that, that could dispel or show how effective it is? Because having it all in these graphs and papers, and showing decimals, something like that, like, I know, you, you research all this stuff now, so you said you become very familiar with acoustics. But, but in terms of just lay folk like myself, a YouTube video would work great. If I could watch something that says, oh, this is how it, this is how much it reduces the sound, that would, I think, help understand it, for me at least, and maybe for other folks.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly don't have anything prepared for that, but I, you know, gave them a couple minutes, and tried to find something that, you know...
I was just thinking, like, maybe one of the manufacturers already has a good video that's showing their product, that you could maybe send those out, they could go out with maybe a letter to the community, saying, if you're interested in how this soundproofing will work, here's an example on YouTube, and you can very easily just go to this link and check out.
Yeah, I can, I can find that. Most of the videos I've seen from the manufacturers are going to be preparing with, it's mostly about the technology itself, but if, you know, a vacuum chills that you use, and, but if something like that exists, I will find it, and I'll, I'll make sure that people have access to listen.
We can, we can also include a copy of the soundproofing plan with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Any other comments? Now I'll close the public hearing, and it's just up to us now to see what we, we think about this.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that the planning commission recommend conditional approval of special-use permit application of R-S-U-B dash, oh my gosh, I can't write this down. One, yes, please, 1-849-2019 for a dog-trained facility and kennel with the seven conditions advised by town staff and staff report.
Is there a second to this?
I'm second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
What's that? Any discussion?
Well, I'll just say to the record, I'm delighted to see some entrepreneurial spirit on the rural village.
And I would say that it seemed to me a very, very great, uh, care was made in determining noise abatement, and so I think it looks, it looks very good, but still, I, I, and I think your, your answer, I consider is satisfactory about the necessity of Tier Two, uh, so that is, that may be required at some point, but I don't know for sure. Any other comments? Mr. Parker, do you call for a vote?
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Gordon?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Vice Chairman McFadden?
Yes.
Commissioner Marshner?
Yes.
Okay, this, um, this motion has been approved. And that's the only public hearing that we have. Thank you for all of the participating. Uh, there is, uh, next, Ivan has consented agenda, but there's none. We have a new business, uh, F-R-S-U-B dash zero zero eight three oh, dash two oh one eight preliminary plan application submitted by Rand, and see any four, a thirty-three lot subdivision within the R-one district. Mr. Camp, if you can invite us on that?
So, uh, this is going to be, uh, section four of Happy Creek Mall subdivision, as you said, thirty-three lots in the R-one zoning district. Um, and what we included is extension of public roads, specifically, um, we would see the extension of U- 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 So it's almost a final plan, but there's still a lot of things like landscaping and final grading, and some other things that still need to be addressed. But that's part of the intent of the preliminary plan. The applicant would be required to submit this, the final documentation for the final plan, as well as bonding and the final plats within a three-year time period. If he doesn't do that, the approval for the preliminary plan would expire. Speaking with the applicant, I think he intends to move forward with this pretty quickly. The pump station facility would be paid for by the applicant, as well as all the proposed infrastructure. And that's clarified in one of the conditions, approval that I've recommended. If you go back to the report, I've recommended approval of the plan appears to meet all the requirements for preliminary plan. The recommendation is for approval with four conditions. One, the final subdivision plan to be submitted within three years. For the date of approval, preliminary plan shall meet to the town requirements for our recommendation. Two, all information not provided on the preliminary plan shall be included on the final subdivision plan, including but not limited to landscaping, plan, and design of the pump station itself, the town specifications, recreating plan to address recommendations of the geotechnical report. And anything else is determined in that review process. Three, the, there should be a handrail fence or some other suitable barrier provided between the public sidewalk where it comes up against the stormwater management facility. So this was status recommendation, because it's a very, it's a sharp drop off there. And so we did have concern that there needed to be some sort of barrier there to prevent people from falling on the stormwater pond. And four, the applicant shall be responsible for all costs associated with the design, bonding, and construction of the proposed improvements. The applicants here this evening, have any questions? I'm glad to answer any questions as well.
Are these, are these envisioned as multi-story or a single-story housing?
Our intent is to continue what we've done in the other sections of the development, which includes the open ridge section. So it'll be a mixed type of development. There'll be some two stories, there'll be some one stories. There'll be some split foyer style houses as well. It'll be a mix.
The shell or the pale gray along the right coming up is a different shade of gray from the other. So the steepest slopes are the ones at the bottom left. Is that, am I reading that correctly? Well, the wastewater management's at the bottom right. So to the left of that, as you go, that, the darker gray is to the left. That's the steeper slope.
Yeah, there's some slopes off the backside of that where the backyards actually will gray down to the property line. There will be some slopes there. Not, not significantly different than some of those up in the areas of the sections that's completed there off of Picket Court. There are similar slopes off those houses as well that already exist. So it's, so it's, it's not, there's nothing different there that's not associated with existing houses there already.
So what are you going to have to be leveling then? So what are you gonna be leveling that, if you're very?
There's really not a whole lot to level. The, where you see the street right now is not far from finished grade of what's out there. If you were to go out and look at it right now, the continuation, there's a little, a little up and a little down here due to some storm drainage and that type of thing. So it's not just flat. But we're, we're very close, there will be very little dirt moved in this, in the site plan.
I did drive out there yesterday, and it was, I was very pleased with the, it was a previous development.
Good, thank you.
We had the same public housing.
That's our intent. We've been many years. We're doing things like, but yeah, no way to continue that.
Just to clarify, the areas that are two-to-one slope right now, are you going to grade those to three-to-one, or how's that gonna be?
Well, actually, the most significant grade is actually there at the storm pond, where we found in our testing that there could potentially be an issue with that. We're looking at, at regrading that. We also may end up putting in some sort of retaining walls type thing with a barrier, with a safety barrier around that, which then transitions into softer slopes and that type of thing. So we've not precluded, we don't have any retaining walls shown in this plan at this time, but we've not precluded the use of them in order to make the nice transitional, as well as landscaping effects and that type of thing. It's why, I guess, in my eyes, a couple more difficult lots really are actually the first three lots on the left at the top. Because those actually rise from the street, and the easiest way to kind of take care of those, which are like, what are you gonna do with those? They work beautifully for a two-story split foyer on the front with a walkout on the back. And you create this nice general grade into your garage on the floor level. Yeah, your steps now, you know, most of you are, we got a couple of young people here who still like steps. These are not homes that mostly, you know, are senior citizens are gonna buy, but we, we build houses for everybody. So, so we understand what one person likes, another person doesn't. And at the same time, we have these other lots that are, where they're gonna be nice and flat out, you know, one story with no steps and handicap accessible and that type of thing. So we have, we have a mix in mind.
We know a little bit about steps at our house.
So yeah, we, we do mix, and we work with all clientele, so. And everyone, it's amazing, you know, people come in and will tell me, well, I've done this, or I've done that, and, okay, we can do that for you. So anyway, the property does lend itself to a mixed house and addressing degrees. You, I've always had the issue where people come along, I have this house. Well, if you have this house, then you need to find a lot that will fit on it. On the other hand, you come along and say, I have this lot. Well, then you need to find a house that fits that lot. And sometimes, it's an educational process of working with people to bring the two together. And forcing a house onto the lot is not in the interest of the purchaser, nor the town, nor any of the neighbors, or anybody else. And so things have to transition smoothly. And we've tried, I discourage people from doing crazy stuff along the way, of forcing houses on lots, or forcing, you know, where they go wall-to-wall and build too much house on the lot, or that type of thing. And probably more of a.
And my other concern is just to be really careful of the safety, because that's shaping up to be an area that will be just loaded with children, I think. You know, there's the schools out there and everything else. So just being, you know, we'll be looking for that as this moves along.
We have a limited amount, by virtue of interparcial connectivity, we will generate a little bit more traffic into that area than what's there right now. But right now, with the limited access, you know, if you go up Picket Court, I mean, there's basketball goals out in the middle of the street and kids everywhere. You really do have to be careful, because, I mean, they live in the street, literally, on that one. Call us back. However, the issue here, we cannot not put an interconnective parcel, or connectivity to the Swan property by virtue of town code.
Well, I'm thinking more of the corner where the drainage damage is. That's, that's the only area I'm concerned about, and you have the experience to have a good plan for that, I think. But seeing it really spill out, I think you're more comfortable.
Right. Well, we're, we'd be definitely interested in, in safety. You know, we're not looking for any issues there. We have a storm pond that we maintain, they're already down next to Happy Creek Road. And other than some of the intrusions from the additional development that's been placed in the area, we actually had that where kids were playing in it. Can't play in it anymore since the road was built and the school was built, because contrary to state code, there's a lot more runoff, and we're dealing with a lot more water, and we're not able to maintain the pond in the same fashion it has been for the past ten years. Once they came in and started to renovate the school, it's over, over the ball wax now. We were able to mow it cleanly, and kids could play down there, but they can't do that anymore. So it's, it definitely has changed the complex, or the dynamics of the area with the improvements that have been made beyond our development. However, at that point where our existing storm pond is, they do work. Happy Creek Road was known to be closed on a regular basis prior to us building the development out there and building a storm retention pond. Now, it's, I think it's been one time that water actually went over. In the past ten years, there's been water gone over Happy Creek Road, where you couldn't actually go out right there next to Mr. McDonald's, because the water used to just flood all the road and had to shut it down. People had to go around out the apple house, even didn't get home. And it's, I, it's one time now we've had flood large enough to overflow to our rear wall there to the point where people still drove through it. It wasn't closed, but it was, but it did actually get over the road. So it's doing its job, it's doing its job. So that's, that's, and that's the end point, safety has been missed. Public travels, a little better for us.
How many, how many different model homes, some people have to choose from?
We don't do specific model homes. We're not a, like a national builder that has eight, eight products, you pick one. And typically with them, they like every lot to be the same. As I said, the lots are not gonna be the same. And as a result, I've designed, built, and I, and I don't think ever built two houses alike.
Thanks a bunch, Mr. Diver.
I like the front porches.
Yeah. Oh, I like front porches. I like covered entryways. Very front believer in, fought hard for that, who won't go into that politics. Years ago, I wrote the front porch code. Gets into code today, we read it, so, just out, because of issues we have. Because we, we're a front believer in front porches.
Any other comments? Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, are we, we have any more discussion here?
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. Mr. Camp, we will review the final subdivision development plan, correct?
Yes, sir. That would have to go to the town council as well. But this process just requires planning commission approval.
Thank you.
I move that the planning commission approved preliminary plan F.R.S.U.B. zero 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 eight three zero dash two zero one eight, with the conditions recommended by town staff as discussed and as detailed in the staff report.
Second. It's moved and seconded. Assuming we had discussions, Ms. Potter, do you?
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Vice Chairman McFadden?
Yes.
Commissioner Marshner?
Yes.
Commissioner Gordon?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
This has been approved. Now, we have one item in our old business. It's F.R.S.U.P. dash twelve sixty-three dash two oh one nine, special use permit application submitted by the Embassy Deliverance and Worship Center for daycare at four sixty South Commerce Avenue.
Mr. Camp?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This application was tabled until the next meeting. This is the next meeting, so. The applicant has requested an extension until the June meeting. They have informed me that they're working on additional details, such as the floor plan that's to scale, and working on layouts for creation of the drop-ons. They need more time to design that, but also to coordinate that with the other uses and property owner. So it's hopeful that we get that for the June meeting, but I'm still not sure about that. But I think they would like to target that as the date that they bring it back with that information. They wanna make sure they get all the information right. So I would recommend that extension. Be great.
So a draft motion perhaps?
I move that the planning commission tabled special use application, R.I.F.S.P.U. one two six three two zero one nine until the next regular staff planning commission meeting. Second.
It's moved and seconded. Ms. Potter, do you?
Commissioner Gordon?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Marshner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman McFadden?
Yes.
Motion is approved. The next item is the planning director's report, the report. Camp?
Just to note a few things this evening. One, you've got the monthly report, I think you're starting to pick up. Activity's been a little stronger the last few weeks as far as permitting. And a lot of speculation going on as well, so it does appear like, at least the housing market's picking up, not only maybe because of the economy, but also because of weather. At this time of year, we typically do see a surge in activity. I have handed out to you the draft parking study. It was completed by the regional commission, with assistance of our staff collecting the data. And that's in a draft form, I've given it to you this evening, so you can take it home and review it. And I would like to request we schedule a work session, possibly June fifth, if that's suitable with your schedules, in which we can review this. Does that, does that date work for everybody?
June fifth sounds good.
June fifth? It's the first Wednesday in June.
Yes, six. Does that work for you? Charlie, does that work for me?
It's not.
Does that work for me? You're another ten, unfortunately.
What time do you plan to have?
From the night before until the night after. Oops.
The alternate day that I had selected was May twenty-ninth. I think it's in the town, review the document.
The twenty-ninth would work for me.
I'll be the honorarischen for the second part of the certified planning commission course.
Does it have to be Wednesday?
It doesn't. That's just the day we usually try to be, for consistency purposes. I insert, we get into some, some other days, sometimes there's some conflicts. We could target a different day, and then we should check that with our schedule first to confirm. We can do that over the email. Is there a particular?
How about May twenty?
Second, alternative day? Tuesday?
Tuesday, May twenty.
Tuesday, May twenty, it works for me.
Yep, that works. Potter, do you know of any meetings on the twenty-eighth?
I think it's probably, we've all checked, maybe that's one of those.
Commissioner Merchant has a problem with that date.
So, do you feel that, sorry?
That's Memorial Day week, you know, people on vacation.
On Memorial Vacation.
Vacation, what's that?
It's what Americans do to spend money, keep the economy going.
About the first Tuesday, the day before, the first we have suggested.
Listen, the meeting conflict on the first Tuesday.
Is there any way just to do it, say, now we have a meeting, like, come in early?
All right, what about Tuesday, June four?
We do, we do work session before our normal session, on the fifteenth?
Of June?
Right, we've already got a town, we've already got our commission meeting.
The fifteenth of June is a Saturday.
I'm sorry, um, the twelfth, no, nineteen, sorry, nineteen, because my back to me, that's today. That's today. So I, I will not be here for the next meeting, um, fifteen.
How about, no, Tuesday nineteenth?
Yeah, I will not make that.
I could have her do a pre-meeting.
Okay. How about everybody else?
So my, my consensus, how about I'll send out an email out with three days, put it on them, and the winner, like, most people come up and say, well, pick that day.
So we could make the chairman of that guy and ask him to set the date?
I like, I like the, what Mr. Camp just said.
All right, any questions before you adjourn?
I just wanna say I drove by the ice and water machine the other day. That's a business design ball. Didn't take them long, they were on.
It wasn't, it's not complete either, so it's also work to do on the site.
But they got it right away.
Start paying and screening.
So I have a question about the report. What's this group on the housing, the EDA workforce dozen project?
That's approved, awaiting for someone to pull a permit to construct the thirty-six apartments. And so it's a big project in the town, and so I've kept it on the report. But at this point in time, I don't know what the status is with the EDA. It's their project, and they're, as you know, it's some turmoil right now, so trying to work out that. I hope people will see something this year.
And would you say the same about the afternoon? Isn't it just about the same story?
Afternoon, I would just repeat the exact same thing I just said.
For the last.
Any other number of reports, questions, comments? If not, a meeting to, a motion to adjourn?
Move we adjourn the meeting?
Sorry.
I'd like to have a grave on that. Suppose have a majority to vote to adjourn, so.
Ms. Potter, do you have any?
Commissioner McFadden? I'm sorry, Vice Chairman McFadden?
Yes.
Commissioner Marshner?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Gordon?
Yes.
I love hearing that.